Okay, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting, City of Palm Valley, June 21st, 2022, 6:00 PM. And that's gonna give our, her.
Father, I just thank you for this opportunity to meet together and serve the people of Palm Valley, or give us wisdom as we make decisions. And, or I just pray that we're blessed into this community in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Get your mic. I need public comments.
Uh, this evening, we have Ms. Atthe Butler regarding, her topic of discussion is voting.
I'm Atthe Butler, and I live at 5516 Palm Valley Road, North. I have a question about my head. Did all of you guys read the bill that were planned, that they did at the last meeting? Y'all voted to pay for that bill of $17,000. Is this my understanding? You guys did this. For a motor that someone was working on concrete, and he ran, and the motor was damaged with some rocks. He should have insurance to pay for that. To me, it looks like he is claiming from both the insurance company and the city. When I have someone working for me, I always ask if they are bonded, and plans should be bonded, and he should have insurance to cover that. We have two council members that was put in last night. And did they read and look over this bill? They voted yes on it. I'm on a board at Valley Christian Heritage School in Allen. When we get a bill, we talk it over, tackle it until the next meeting, so we aren't spending money just because we have it. I have never paid a bill until I look it over. Do you? I work hard for what I have, so I watch what I am spending on. Just because the city has a little money, don't go spending it like water.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Agenda item number five, unfortunately, George Rivera was unable to attend. But we have a beautiful platform for seven years of service. And I've done it for a month, and I'm worn out. So he's done it 84 months. And so if you see him in town, please pat him on the back. And Chief, you can deliver that for me. Okay. All right. I guess we got Quentin, agenda item number six, presentation and acceptance of the city off, office, city audit for fiscal year ending September 2021.
All right, thank you, members of the council. I believe that, that you have in your agenda packets copies of the, of the audited financial statements. We, we had an opportunity, we worked with your, your finance department, with your personnel, to, to complete this financial report, so it could be submitted to you, and examine supporting documentation during our audit process. I'm here to give you a summary of the information that's in the report. We also had an opportunity to, to go over the report with, with management and two members of the council to review the report in detail and the recommendations that we had as a result of the audit process. I'm gonna take you in to a few pages back that indicates the, has the independent auditor's report. And so that report is what you engaged us to do, to render an opinion on the financial statements. And we worked with, with your administrative personnel and accounting department to complete this financial statement and, and to make adjustments that we thought were appropriate in working with them. And as a result of, of the work that we did on page three, we, we rendered our opinion that the financial statement is fairly present in all material respects your financial position of, you know, of all your activities for the past, past fiscal year. And so that, that's what you would be hoping for as, as members of the council, unmodified report. The financial statements do fairly present your financial position. There's a lot of additional information in the report because you're a governmental entity. Some reports required by government, government accounting standards board, and, and some, some required simply because you're a, a state and local government, and there's some compliance rules and regulations that you have to possibly issue, reports that deal with that. And I'll share that with you as we get to the back of the report. What I want to do is summarize some of the financial highlights. And, and, and you can jump in at any point with questions that you might have. But I think the two, two most useful pages in the, in this fairly lengthy report would be page 10 and 11. So. I apologize, the audience doesn't have the, the benefit of, of the information. But page 10 and 11 gives you some comparative information of, of your assets and liabilities and net position for the city at a point in time. And it's, and that position is a reflection of your, of your financial health, okay? For those new to the council, it includes governmental activities, which, you know, for the ci- city not being overly complex is basically your general fund, your budgeted fund. And, and those activities are ones that are primarily financed by property taxes and sales tax revenue and franchise fees and things of that nature, okay? And then you also have another fund, your, your water, water and sewer fund. It's categorized as a business type activity on the concept that you're charging users for services, right? And so you, you charge for the water and sewer services with the intent of, of charging enough to recapture the cost of operations like a business would do. So distinguishing between the two, one's your general fund funded by, you know, property taxes and sales tax, and the other is your business type activities funded by user fees. So a couple of things stick out on page 10 and 11. And, and I like the schedule because it's comparative, and it'll show 2021 and 2020. And you can see that, that in the, in the, in the, in the governmental activities, things are, are fairly comparable. There's, there's a little bit of additional cash at the end of the fiscal period, 500,000 compared to 638, and that's primarily a result of, you guys received $150,000 in American Rescue Plan funds, ARPA funds at the end of the fiscal period, coming through TIDAM, and you hadn't spent it at the end of the fiscal period. And you're still planning on how you are spending that. But that's the primary increase in, in current assets. And so it's that amount of, of, of grant revenue that you hadn't expended is also sitting down in a deferred liability account. You can see the difference from one year to the next, you know, 20,000 compared to 168,000. That's primary difference in, in the governmental activities comparing one year to the next. Your, your net position, you know, is, is, you know, a healthy, a healthy $2.1 million. Changed by about $19,000, we'll see that on the next page. It's, it's, your unrestricted net position was $469,000 for, for governmental activities. A slide to the columns next to that, the business type activities. And you'll see a substantial change in overall assets at about $5 million compared to $3.2 million. And, and the big differential there, you see in, in non-current assets is you guys entered into an interlocal agreement with, with Cameron County Drainage District and agreed to, to issue some debt on their behalf for, for the project that they're going to embark on. And that was a little over $1.3 million, and that's sitting in restricted cash and sitting in, you know, you know, notes payable or certificates of qualification payable. We see down in your liabilities how they increased from 100,000 to 1.5. All of that, all of that money is to be repaid in accordance with interlocal agreement by payments coming from, from the Drainage District. So you were the, you were the intermediary or the conduit for, for issuing the debt, and they're making all the payments. There's some footnote disclosures that deal with that. But, but that sticks out. If you were looking at, at this year compared to last year, you say, wow, that's a big change in, in assets. So we have, we have $1.3 million in restricted cash and $1.3 million in debt that will be paid off over a period of time through payments coming from, through your interlocal agreement with the, the Drainage District. So the net position of your business type activities grew from, from $3.1 million to $3.4 million, you see that on page 10. Let's look at revenues and expenses, and this is kind of be the last chart I might summarize for you. And then any questions you might have, we'd be glad to address. But page 11 will show revenues and expenses for, for 2021 and 2020 for your governmental activities and also for your business type activities. And a couple of things stick out in revenues for, for governmental activities. You know, there are $1,56,000, they've grown from, from 938, the primary changes. You, you had a grant in addition to the ARPA funds, which you hadn't spent yet. You received some, some coronavirus relief funds, about $61,000. And that's not something you had in the prior year, so that's an additional flow of revenue. And you'll see, you know, property taxes changed slightly from one year to the next, 619 to 632. And the category of other taxes represents sales and liquor taxes collected during the year and, and franchise fees that are collected. They're, they're fairly comparable, 217,000 compared to 206,000. So the primary increase is a little bit change in property taxes. And then that grant that, that came from the coronavirus relief fund that you hadn't had in the past. So the overall expenses in government activities are, they're, they're very comparable, 870,000 compared to 851,000. And they're broken down for you. So you had a, a net increase when you compare your revenues and expenses of about $180,000 in, in your net position. And you made a transfer out to the Water and Sewer Fund of 200,000 in anticipation of, of projects and things that you might have. And you've, you've been making a transfer each year. If you see the comparable transfer of about 150 the year before. So your, your net position in those governmental activities, again, it only changed by about 19,000 from still, still in excess of 2.1 million. Your business type activities, revenues and expenses, you'll see $960,000 in charges for services compared to 777,000. The primary reason, you know, that's your water and sewer, sewer service charges. The big change there was you, you began collecting, you know, a drainage improvement fee in, in the, in the current fiscal period that you hadn't been collecting in the past. That was included, included on the utility bills. And so, you know, other than that, there's not much of, of any change in, in the overall revenues from, from the, from that, from the system. So you, you ended the year comparing revenues and expenses with, with a margin of about $100,000, and that added to, to net position for the, for the water and sewer system, which, which grew from about 3.2 million to 3.4 million. That's a big, that's a summary of some big numbers. There's detailed financial statements included in the report on, on each of the funds, the general fund and, and the, the water and sewer fund. And there's some comparative schedules in the back as well that, that you've presented, along with some lengthy footnote disclosures that are required by general accepted accounting principles that make comparisons of things like your receivables and, and your, your capital assets, as well as, as well as the long-term debt, which is something that you haven't had in the past. So there are some footnotes in, in the schedule on page 37 that, that discuss that. I'm gonna take you to page 41. One of the, one of the duties that you have or responsibilities as a commission is, is, you know, the approval of a budget for operating purposes. Page 41 is the budget that you, you approved for the year and that you amend throughout the year as you, as you review the condition of, of your, your finances and changes and things that occur. You make budget amendments, and that's presented in comparison to, to your actual revenues and expenses. So it shows what you anticipated when you adopted the budget, and, and it shows the amended budget and shows a comparison to overall final results. And overall, revenues were, were higher than budgeted, and that primarily coming from, you know, the grant revenue that you, that you hadn't anticipated. And expenditures were fairly close to, to what you budgeted. So the budget, again, represents your, your control and authorization over the expenditure process. The, the back of the financial statement, as I was looking at the independent auditor's opinion, I told you that there's also some compliance matters that, that, that you have to, that your task was complying with. And so we issued a separate report back on page 49 that talks about controls over financial reporting and compliance for an audit performed in accordance with government audit standards. And so this, in this report, we didn't find any, any significant non-compliance or, or material deficiencies, but we did have some recommendations, some, some control related recommendations that we reviewed with management and with council members. And we discussed things that we thought you, you could work on in improving controls in, in, in a couple areas of the city. I think we had three different control recommendations, we discussed them. And I think that you had a clear understanding of what our recommendation was and what might be appropriate corrective action on your part. I'd be glad to address any questions, if you have something specific on the statements. And if one question comes up at a different point in time, you just relay that to us, and we'd be glad to address that for you. Yes?
So the 150 was like PPO, Matty?
Yes. Similar, it wasn't a payroll protection loan, and it wasn't a loan at all. It was through the same source, through ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act. And, and so the federal government issued gazillions of dollars in, in awards to state and local governments. And, and each community in Texas could apply for and receive some of those awards. And your award was $153,000 to be used, you know, you guys would plan for it and budget for it. There's, there's specific uses that, that you can, you can use that money for. At the end of the year, you hadn't used it yet. So it was sitting in the bank, and then it was sitting as unearned revenue. As you expend it, it'll, it'll become grant revenue, right?
And so there, so there's not any time restraints?
There, there, as a matter of fact, you should be getting a second tranche of that, right?
We should be, yes. You still have to deal with some paperwork.
Right. Sometime in the next month or so, our local governments are receiving a second round of that, of that money. The timeframe, your, 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 the regulations would say you have to obligate the funds by the end of 2024, right? So meaning you can't just sit on it, can't just do nothing with it. And, but also gives you time not to just waste it, right? You know, figure out what you can do with it, how could it benefit? How can it supplement, right, what you're doing? Because it won't be around forever, right? And if you become to rely on it and it's gone, then you'll have some issues. But, and so you have till 2024 to obligate it, you have till 2026 to spend it. That's a long time. So I would imagine if you have some plans, you put them together, you make decisions on how to, how to consume it. And, and that'd be something that you do in your budget process as a council.
According to their rules. And are there any other strings attached? I mean, we don't have to repay anything?
No, you only have to repay it if you don't use it, right? Which would be, would be not something that you want to do. And so in, in, if you didn't spend it and then follow the regulations in, in the documentation behind the expenditures, you could have, you could have a point which someone questions the cost or the supporting documentation for the cost. But because of the amount that you received, you, you're, there's, there's some fairly loose regulations on how, how you can spend it. If, if there was an interim final rule that came out, and there was a final rule that came out. And in the final rule, they said that locality could, could decide that you have, this money is all lost revenue, lost revenue that you might have had because, for whatever reason, you didn't have the sales tax that you were going to have before. You didn't, your businesses weren't open. Or, and, and so there's not a lot of strings on how you do it. That just replaces revenue that you might have otherwise had. And so, and, and that final rule allowed, you know, up to $10 million to be designated as lost revenue. So you've got 153,000, make it another round of that, 153,000. And so, you know, 300,000 is not a small amount of money for a community your size. These, you can do it well, so.
And the same with public money for the 60.
Right, the, the 61,000, there were, there were things you were allowed to do, and you actually did use it to help a small business. I think you, you used it in, in a grant to the, to the, to the club, and other local businesses could apply for that. And so that is also not real restrictive on, on how you could use that money. Both of those came from, you know, our pandemic-related relief, but there are two separate laws. Coronavirus Relief Fund was, was the 61,000, and American Rescue Plan Act was 153,000, two, two different federal regulations.
Any other questions?
We answered most of them.
Someone like to make a motion to accept?
I move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass. Thank you, Quentin.
Thank you.
Agenda item number seven, discussion, possible action to approve the minutes of regular meeting, May 17, 2022. Any issues with the minutes?
I didn't have any.
Got a motion?
I move that we accept the minutes from the meeting of May 17, 2022.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passed. Discussion, possible action to approve payment as agenda item eight to New Core Inc. for the rebuilds of two pumps associated with Lake Three improvements at the golf course in a total amount of $16,072.09.
Yes, David Flynn, the engineer on that project. You recall last meeting, you approved the final change order for the contractor? And that, that was involved a suction pipe in the lake that was supposed to be there. All the evidence was, was there, and it was not there.
Correct.
And so, in, because it was a kind of an emergency situation, the contractor that was doing the lake improvements mobilized and got rented equipment, got it, that's why. And so we put in a pipe that helps the country club. It wasn't there, okay? The, the, the impact of that pipe not being there when they backfilled the wall is the backfill material got in the pumps during that operation. So it damaged the pumps, they need to be repaired. My recommendation is the country club pay for their pump repair in that 16 grand or whatever it changed. And I don't know how they can pay it, maybe they have the law of agreement. But the way it turned out, that bill was sent to the city.
From the country club?
No, from the, from the New Core.
So it's not our bill?
In my opinion.
So that's that.
We already paid for some improvements to help them.
That's that pipe that you were, you said, well, the nonexistent pipe that you were talking about before, right? So in that process, all the pumps got damaged.
Correct. We got, we got damaged because the pipe wasn't there. And it was discovered because the pipe wasn't there, because the pumps were having issues. And then we discovered there was not a pipe there. Contractor got in the water and tells around, it wasn't there. So we got a brand-new 15-inch PDC pipe and stabbed it into the well. So now it's got a completely branded pipe. That's my report.
So.
Well, it's, so. The country club had some pipes damaged, you know, they want us to pay for it. Is that the, pretty much what it comes down to?
No, the motors.
The motors for the pumps.
Motors, the motors, motors and some bearings, and had to be rebuilt. Rebound and, and the bearings had to be.
And these pumps are for, for exactly what, for the pumps exactly for?
They irrigated the pumps.
Well, I don't see why we have to pay for it.
So.
We, we could table it and talk the HCC, right? Try to figure out responsibility. Well, I think is there a responsibility at this point?
Yeah. Make a motion to.
Do we need to make a motion to table?
To table or to go ahead and based on his recommendation?
Yes, it's there. So I would like to make a motion to assign the responsibility where it belongs to Orange and Country Club as far as the repair of, of their sprinkler system. I mean, pumps, that's.
I second that motion.
I don't think you could legally make that motion, but you can't just elect not to, to move on this motion.
Okay.
But that's not a proper motion, can't assign responsibility in this fashion.
According to the recommendation of the engineer?
I think the engineer's recommendations is, is that the, the city doesn't pay for it. So that would be the motion that would be appropriate.
Okay, let me strike that, then. I would like to make an, a motion, according to the recommendation of the engineer, David Flynn, that the, the engines to the sprinkler system is the responsibility of Orange and Country Club.
That's the same.
Is that right?
No.
It's not ours.
Council.
Not ours.
I, I would, I suggest that the motion that the motion is to not pay the bill to New Core Inc. in the amount of 16,072.09 at that, leave it at that.
Oh, not saying anything else. Okay, I'll try it again. Strike that last one. I'd like to make a motion not to pay the bill to 6,000, at 6, that $16,072.09 to New Core Inc. Okay, that's it.
Second, second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass? Or, I guess it didn't pass.
Well, no.
Okay, you're abstaining. Okay, he's abstaining.
Okay. Is, is that a, is that a quorum, or do I need to?
So we have two and one abstention, Jason.
You have a 2-0 vote. And you have a, the quorum is just the council members that are present. You, you still have a quorum even though he's, he's abstaining from the
Okay.
particular vote. Have a majority vote on this, on, in essence, it wasn't an approval of not approving item number nine, I mean, excuse me, item number eight. So I believe the vote is, is appropriate, it's 2-0.
So the motion carries?
Carries.
Thank you, Jason.
Yes.
Thank you, David. Agenda number nine, discussion, possible action to approve of the variance request by Courtney Smith for a fence at 5416 Palm Valley Drive South as it relates to the 25-foot boundary requirements of the golf course.
Okay. Okay, we were requesting a fence clearance from 5 to 7 feet. We recently updated our pool and added, we recently updated our pool and added in our outdoor kitchen, where our pool was, there's some gas lines that have been installed and water pipelines that went right behind our pool. So our variance that were requested. So, our variance that we're requesting is to give us leeway to install our fence where we're not dri- going down into the pipelines or anything like that. Um, we are all full thirteen, and so I don't know if anybody knows, we sit far back of thirteen, of the thirteen, um, hole. And, um, there's plenty of space. So, all we're requesting is five to seven feet and where our property line goes, since we sit back, it kind of curves. So, one side it's five feet, one side it's seven feet. So, that's why the request is from five to seven. Any question?
Well, show us where, okay, okay.
So, here's our house, here's our kitchen, here's our pool. So, this dotted line across right here, this will be our twenty-five mark. So, we have a cedar picket fence that runs right here, and this fence is about six feet that goes out right here. Then we're gonna have aluminum fence that comes across and comes back down, and I think this is five feet over here.
Like a wrought iron type.
And then there's already existing fireplace, existing fireplace along with the fence already here. So, we're just trying to enclose all of this. So, we'll be getting some to our property with our pool and we can actually pass the question.
And I think neigh- neighbors on both sides don't have a problem with the aluminum fence, but one of your neighbors has a problem with
Yes.
that small section of.
He says it's restricting from his view, so we discussed, we have a four foot fence. So, we are going to cut this fence down once we get everything installed. We're gonna make that a four foot fence, but he did see it there.
You know, what, and, and have you guys considered going aluminum in that five to seven? Because you're, uh, cedar.
Well, since the problem may be is the fence doesn't start to back here. So, what, what's gonna happen is if we do that feeder or take out that cedar fence, you're gonna, it's gonna kind of go right into our backyard and kind of gives way of our privacy here.
Oh, okay.
You, you come to an agreement with that labor?
I have, yeah. He has told me what he wants, and of course, I said, well, and prior to that, I did send pictures to you guys on this, well. We had a, um, a triple pond up sitting there that was over eight feet tall, that was exactly right in here. And so, he said he could see through that, so my whole purpose, even if I do have four feet, he can see through it. And it's not restricting anything.
There was a fence permit application that was, uh, done on the nineteenth of May, and.
There's the colored pictures right there.
It was this, the, the building inspector said he didn't approve it at that point.
Correct, and that's why we stopped and came to the city and figured out, so we had existing fence. And so, we, not knowing that we had to get a permit for an existing fence, this plan we went in and, and then the city's figured out, yeah. So, that's just kind of where we stopped. We haven't done anything else. But, so this little line over here where the white flags are, that is the requested line. Um, see where this pool is right here, that is the twenty-five mark. So, your existing fence was there, you're just replacing. So, technically, we never had any. So, our pool had a about two and a half foot, uh, wall, and that was our fence. So, kinds of changed, codes have changed, so now we're just trying to get us a regulation hatch, have a four foot fence, and this is our fence down here. That we will be putting up across the golf course.
The inspectors here also, you guys want to ask questions?
Yes.
Mr. Ramos is here.
Evening. Good evening. Louis Ramos, building inspector. You have any questions that could?
So, since I'm not a building inspector and I pretty much can't even build a birdhouse, why is it, why can we? Why does a fence have to move out that way? Is there a requirement by, by the, by code that you can't do it?
Yes, it's an enclosure for the rear yard setback. In other words, the minimum rear yard setback is twenty-five feet, and they're encroaching into a twenty-five foot rear yard setback. By five feet to seven feet.
Mm-hmm.
So, she's requesting a variance to allow her to go into that, the twenty-five foot rear yard setback.
Good.
Bye.
Five to seven.
Bye.
Uh, like, you can see all the way up here, uh, that whole white, the little box down there, that's kind of where the twenty-five foot mark is, so it's still, there's still quite a ways to get to our property line and in the golf course. So, yeah, I always thought those little white stakes were your property line. So, technically, the white stakes, I can be wrong. There are the OD lines for the golf course, that's not actually kind of city state, but that's kind of our rough estimate of where in this area. That's kind of where your twenty-five mark is from our, and you can build on our own property, yes, without asking for a.
At ground level, a sidewalk and, you know, see the rest of the stuff they've done there? That, that meets approval, correct?
Yeah.
But when it starts going up, like a fence or something like that, it's twenty-five foot setback. And that's kind of a standard procedure on golf courses and stuff, and, and when you look at.
There's, there's another picture right there.
And is it because people, it's getting too close to where balls fly and stuff?
It's just that you're gonna get into a hodgepodge of all sorts of different stuff, and I'm telling you, when you look on TV and there's a high-end golf course with high-end houses there, you know, you, you see, you just, they, they, I don't know what restrictions they've got in place, but they've got much more, much more restrictive than what, than what it is at, at Palm Valley and, and Harlington Country Club.
And the aluminum fence on this one, um, in my opinion, is fine because it, and I don't know the distance, but there's probably seventy-five yards to to the fairway, you know, I mean.
It's a good way, it is.
And it's not like it's directly on the fairway and, and they're encroaching, the only, the only thing is that right there.
So, this line right here will be the mark. So, I can't, what I was trying to do earlier is I would have to kind of cut right here, so we're just gonna table this off and kind of make it where, you know, we can both see on each other's side. So, if they even want to come over and enjoy the view, they can have a little tabletop right there to kind of open that for them as well.
And that meets with Mr. Franklin's approval?
Yes, it wasn't what he initially wanted, but this was our mark.
All right.
And what if he wanted nothing or a wrought iron, what are his? And, okay, so, perfect. This was our existing backyard. So, this is the fence right here. So, what we originally had, our triple pond, there was another, his view was never
Right.
Never truly there.
Did that meet the, the old fence meet the twenty-five?
Yes, because it sits right there.
Okay. Okay. Yeah.
For the benefit of, of the council, um, this, just so they, we know, all are sure on the ordinance, uh, the twenty-five foot is a reference to the minimum setback in each particular lot. And I'm guessing this particular lot is twenty-five feet. It's not always that in relation to the golf course. So, you have the, the three adjacent property owners really that are usually at play. The golf course, the, which is the country club and the, the people on either side, if there's someone on either side. And, um, so that's the reason for the codification of the, uh, of, in essence, what's a deed restriction is, uh, in, in, in the fence ordinance. So, that's for just historical purposes, what you're looking at, uh, which we did, I don't know, maybe four or five years ago. And, uh, over the last several years, there's, depending on the unique circumstance, there are subtle variances granted uh, to property owners that are mainly compliant with this, uh, fence ordinance.
If you had a option. If, if we didn't. Am I crying? Oh, so this is our other view. Um, I know, we had a big thing right here, and so, this is our little pond, this was over a foot, eight feet tall as well. But, um, if you can go back to, um, the very first picture, or the picture that has the pool. So, okay, right here, um, if this does not pass, we have to go and our gate will be right here. So, we have to come back through and demolish all of, uh, the, the floor to install a So, that's why I'm here.
Let me see.
Any other questions for?
No, 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 I don't have any.
I sure appreciate you.
Thank you.
Golf course.
No, not there.
No.
So, you're just saying that, you know, it sets precedence for people in the future?
Oh, there's, you know, there's, there's some fences that are out there that are, you know, even much closer to the golf course and stuff, and, and when, if and when they have to, you know, rebuild them or something and then re-permit and stuff, then, then we'll, we'll go to, we'll go to visiting on those because, because they don't have this unique situation where something's been built. And then, you know, they're just, their backyard, they just said, we're gonna shove it all the way out there, three foot, five foot away from the, from the actual property line and stuff like that. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with this. Um, it does, from the golf course standpoint, it's not, it's not, it's not that, it's not detrimental and stuff, so.
So, you'll probably be abstaining on this one as well?
Yeah, you know, this, this pertains to my, um, my, uh, where I'm, I'm on the other side of the fence there and stuff, so.
Literally, this one.
Oh, someone has to make that motion.
Well, I'll make a motion to, uh, the request by Courtney Smith as it relates to the twenty-five foot boundary requirement on the golf course. I, uh, I approve the variance.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you had, uh, agenda item number ten, discussion possible action regarding the recommended board appointments by the Park and Rec Advisory Board to fill expired terms. Mr. Top?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight. The, uh, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board uh, has not had a full complement of members, uh, because, uh, Mr. Galvan resigned and Ms. Mercer moved out of the city of Palm Valley, so we're short two members. And the rest of us, our, uh, appointments all ended in May. So, uh, we would like, uh, for you to, uh, I, I've talked to all the rest of the members, and I emailed uh, Mayor Protem Hoff, and, uh, they all would like to continue their service. That is Karen Hanson, Julie Harrington, uh, myself, Scott Nelson, and Sylvia Rivera. Uh, we'd like to continue if it, uh, it, if it meets your pleasure, and, uh, and I highly recommend, uh, two new individuals to replace uh, uh, Michael Galvan and Jane Mercer. Uh, Jennifer Grissom is here tonight. She's nice, sitting right over here next to where I was sitting, and, uh, also, uh, Shane Starbert is here, and he's sitting right here. And, uh, I think, hopefully, you've read what's in your packet about their background and what their, uh, what assets they bring to the, to the advisory board, so.
The only problem I got with Shane, I'm not gonna start wearing big boy pants to these meetings. You're still the boss. It's nice to meet you guys. Someone want to make a motion?
Well, you know, before, can I say something real quick? Um, I don't have a problem with either, but either one of them and, and also having the, the board return. But I think in the, going forward in the future, I think we should have like other cities an application process, so it opens up to the entire city instead of just one recommendation to the other. It's like, we just recommend this person and that person moves in. I think in the, in the interest of transparency, we should have an application process through the city, so from moving forward, people can.
If y'all want to create an application process, that's fine with us. We could do it by face. We're just advising, y'all are the ones in charge.
That'll work. I.
Good, good comment.
Yeah. Thank you.
Motion for, uh, I'm good, uh, motion for, was there four, four, four previous?
Fine.
Five previous and, and, and the two, two new ones to come along as well, too.
And, and they're the, uh, you want to do by main or? It's the new ones and existing ones.
All right, so Jennifer Grissom, Shane Strub, Strubhart?
Strubhart.
And Karen, Karen Hanson, Julie Harrington, Scott Nelson, Sylvia Rivera, and John Top to comprise this, this.
Do we have a second?
Second, please, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passed. All right, agenda item eleven, discussion possible action to rescind previous action taken regarding the sale of police unit nine and instead designate it as a take-home unit by the chief. Um, I have, uh, a little experience with police chiefs. Most of them have been good. But, um, in, uh, a little farrier, the chief had a vehicle. Uh, I know Gil, Gilberto said, uh, in his law enforcement background, the chief always had a vehicle, and I, I think it's important time-wise. I don't know how long and difference it would take you to go to my house from your house versus come here and then to my house, but it's gotta be several minutes, and, um, in your business, minutes are hours, so. I'm in favor of it, but feel free to ask chief questions.
Well, I'm in favor of it as well. I don't think I've ever worked in law enforcement where the chief didn't have a take-home car, and I, and it is true that, uh, minutes are hours in, in law enforcement. I mean, um, I used to have a take-home car and having to go all the way back home and then come back to a crime scene. It, it takes, it, it really takes out of the, uh, out of the response time, and, uh, that really matters to, to police and also being on scene right away, so I am not opposed to.
The other issue we have here is one officer on duty, so, but a lot of times, right?
I'm, most of the time during the day, at night, I try my best to have two officers. I'm a little shorthanded. I've had several of the part-timers and reserves leave. I'm in the process of filling those spots, um, and because of that, uh, the past couple of months, I've having to been coming in on the, on some weekends, some Saturdays, I've had to work and, uh, which, part of the job, right, and I'm complaining, uh, but this is just make it easier to get over here. Uh, and those days that we do have one officer working, there have been occasions where I've had to come and help out, depending on what happens. Uh, it's hurricane season. I know the last few years, we've had all of a sudden a bad flood or rains or whatever. Uh, so there've been times where I had to be called out not only for crime emergencies, but also for natural, natural thing, you know, hur- uh, hurricanes we had a couple of years ago or, or just a lot of rain. Uh, Saturday, for example, we had over an inch of rain and the streets got full. Would've kept raining. Now, we would've had to do our typical call-out movies and things like that, but it stopped and then it drained, so it was okay. Uh, so, so that happens once in a while.
Is it a car or a truck?
It's, uh, one of the SUVs. Yes, ma'am.
So.
The night, I guess, if you saw the notes in there, it's worth about four thousand dollars and costs us fifty bucks a month to insure, so, pretty reasonable.
And we're selling the other one?
I'm sorry.
We're selling the other one?
No, that's the one.
It's okay.
Right, and, and what basically I'm asking is, uh, that's the one we're gonna sell. We finally got it ready to go, uh, because I got all the other units repaired. Uh, but this is just, uh, this is basically the, the unit that we're gonna get rid of, and so I'm asking if y'all would consider this.
Have you, I mean, is radio and all that stuff is in there or?
It's got the emergency equipment, the lights, the siren, the pushbar, all that stain. Uh, radio, we only have two police radios in the cars, so we have those installed in the newer cars. And so, we have the other two that are backups. They don't have radios in them, but every officer has a portable radio, and so we, they use the portals.
So, we're rescinding, selling the.
Along with the motion, I, I move that we, that we rescind that, 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 that one that we had last time, we keep this car, uh, this SUV as the, uh, as, as the chief's, um, transportation, personal transportation.
Have a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thanks, chief, passed. Agenda item twelve, discussion only regarding proposed changes to newsletter publication and potential social media options. Agenda item twelve, discussion only regarding proposed changes to newsletter publication and potential social media options.
So I think there you go. Jesse's coming up.
Good afternoon, my name is Jesse. This is Yvette. Uh, we're here representing J R I T Software Solutions. Um, and the reason why we're here is because, uh, Mr. Lucio, you're about for the good idea, you know, to. Transition from the digital, I mean, from the print newsletter that you have right now to a digital, uh, information distribution. So we are, uh, J R I T Software Solutions, uh, we work with the city, uh, we are your cybersecurity, um, software technology consultants. We also do your IT and that's, we did this study to inform you and, you know, kind of let you know where you stand on the social media.
Um, can I have the next slide, please? Okay, so, uh, some of you might be familiar with the current process. Um, I'm just gonna go over it briefly. So basically the city pays a third party for input, uh, in order to assemble this newsletter. After that, the city prints, um, the letters with their own paper, their own toner. They have to fold them each one individually. There are seven hundred of them that go out each month. And then, uh, several employees would have to drive around the city to deliver the newsletters to residents. Uh, we have attached a map that shows more or less the route that the employees would have to take, um, on a monthly basis. Okay, uh, so basically the city goal is to transition the city newsletter and communication, uh, to a social media channel. Uh, in order to provide effective communication and engagement to citizens and to improve the current information management. And of course the logistics that we saw, um, there's always room for improvement with that. Um, some of the more obvious, um, benefits, you know, of course would be the savings. You'd be saving in transportation, gas, payroll for the employees that go out. It's several employees that go out each month. Uh, as well as their valuable time, of course, um, the ink, the toner, the paper, uh, it would also make the city more eco-friendly. Uh, it would reduce gas emissions as well as, uh, paper. And I'll just run through some social media advantages. Of course, the city would have the ability to relay important information instantly. So as the gentleman, the chief, uh, explained earlier, in case of hurricane season, there's a flood. We can relay that information instantly. They'll have it there readily available for, um, the citizens in case road closures and whatnot. Um, there would, you guys would also have the ability to share important information with a click of a button. Provide reminders, um, on the latest events to the city will be conducting and provide direct links to important forms. Um, as far as the engagement rate, uh, like I mentioned before, there are currently about seven hundred residents or businesses within the city that receive this newsletter. Uh, at times the newsletter is left at the door and it never reaches its intended audience. Uh, unfortunately, due to the logistics, at times they can't wait at the door until somebody comes and grabs the letter. They leave it there. Uh, according to public statistics, over ninety percent of Americans have internet access and in the state of Texas, approximately eighty percent of the population uses the internet on a regular basis. Um, based on those statistics, uh, we believe that we can reach up to six hundred and thirty residents without the possibility of the newsletter being lost after it's been delivered. Um, we believe the engagement rate can increase while lowering the cost significantly by switching to digital information distribution. Um, and I, when another statistic about the decline in, uh, print publishing, according to the US Census Bureau, there's a sharp decline. It's, it's been going down over the past two decades. Basically, people are not reading anything in print, so they're, uh, staying away from that. Hmm, as we know, um, wherever there's pros, there's also some cons, though we would also like to point out some social media considerations.
Okay, so as far as your social media consider, considerations, uh, you gotta keep in mind that you do have a limited ability to address privacy or security issues. Um, and you must rely on that platform's rules or regulations or lack of, okay? Now, there's also what we call ineffective views and this can go to, uh, negative comments and feedbacks. As you know, any user can create a fake profile and that's not good. So, uh, here we have, the option is to use available employee resources to manage your social media channels, providing a cost effective solution. Now, our recommendation as your cybersecurity consultants and your IT, um, is to use available official city website for information distribution, newsletter and communication. This, uh, is because of the ease of implementing city rules and regulations. As well as, you know, making sure it sticks with the city's, uh, specific views and values. The ability to relay important information instantly, the ability to share, uh, important information with the click of a button. And provide direct links to, you know, your important forms. Now, based on this year alone excluding June, and this is a statistic that we provide for you based on, you know, the, the website. Uh, you manage your website and there's a, an average of eleven thousand unique visits to the city of Palm Valley website, um, per month. Uh, by implementing a few changes to your website, we can expect to increase this, you know, this monthly average of visits. Um, and all it would take is basically we create, we can create a form for you, um. You can have the resident subscribe to this and it would send them a text. It would send them a text whenever you guys posted the newsletter, it'll send them a text saying there's a newsletter out there. Whenever you guys post events, same thing, it would send them a text. The cost for this is drastically lower compared to, to, you know, the current process that you're doing.
Okay.
Gilberto did, uh, is there an estimate, um, of what we're paying now and what this would cost?
Well, right now we're, we're probably up in the range of about maybe close to fourteen hundred dollars we're paying a month. For a newsletter that only reaches an intended target of what?
That's without, that's without delivery?
That's with delivery, delivery, paper, toner, uh, manpower. I didn't even include the cost of fuel. It's all, it's about thirteen hundred dollars a month to pay. That includes the marketing and so forth as well.
And have, have they given us an idea?
No.
And not giving us.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions for?
Appreciate. So the next thing is?
I have, what is a citizen? Um, is there any thought of an, of an app of some sort? Or some sort of web, web-based, uh. Browser versus just the computer play, uh, based browser? So it'd be easier for someone to look at with their phone?
Um, you're, so your current website, uh, we did not design your website. Um, we just, you know, we, we maintain it, right? But, um, there is, it does have a mobile version, right? And, and anybody can access it on their phones. Um, now you can always change it, you know, you can redesign it however you want, you can make it better, right? Uh, we can provide that for you now. With the ability to have the resident, you know, sign up for these, they basically subscribe to these newsletters. And they would get this text, right? And so they, they would be able to see it in a PDF version and, um, it would be instant versus, you know, having to wait. For somebody to drop it off to them.
So basically, yes, because there's a mobile version or?
Yes. Yes, there, there's not a, a specific app, right? You guys don't have a specific app. Um, you know, you'd have to design one and build one, but you, your vert, your mobile, I'm sorry, your site does have a mobile and a desktop version.
And any examples of other cities that you've done?
No, no, uh, I don't have any examples of cities, um, that I've done, but I have, I do have other clients. I, I didn't, I didn't bring any examples with me this time, um, but it's, it's, it's just more of you just transforming into a digital. You guys already post your newsletter to your website. You already do it. Um, it, this, all it, all it would do is just send out a text, you know, send out a text informing the residents that you posted this. It's, it's just adding an additional, just to notify them.
I love the text aspect. Sometimes you forget, forget to check your email. If you get a text reminder, then you'll go to your email or you'll remember, oh, the meeting's coming.
Yes, correct. Yes.
Well, thanks a lot, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Agenda item thirteen, discussion, uh, and I will start off with saying my golfing buddies say I talk trash all the time on the golf course. But this one, we're actually gonna discuss trash. Thirteen is discussion only regarding garbage brush debris collection services for the city of Palm Valley. I asked Alberto to kind of look into this. I, I started. Toward the end of last year looking at it and our service will change this year. There won't be no rear pickup with waste management and the other two companies don't even offer that. So we're, we're gonna have to make a decision and grow up as a city and, and so he's been looking into it and I'll let you give the presentation.
Well, um, so right now we have waste management and we have about, roughly about seven hundred homes. Uh, per waste management, they, we're on an open contract with them, meaning that we don't, uh. They, they give us the highest price in the state of Texas. We're literally paying. They, when I mentioned the price of what we pay for trash, there, there's just, it's a, it's way above the charts of what they normally have. So since we're in an open contract, they can pretty much just decide not to services anymore. Uh, they're doing away with the rear. Uh, the trash pickup, in other words, having three, two or three guys come up, pick them up. And one of the reasons is it's a big liability for the trash companies. Very few outline, outline areas in the state of Texas even provide that and, uh, they usually do it out for more, more so rural areas. And so out of these, uh, out of the seven hundred homes, we only have two hundred and thirty-six people that have trash pickup. So where the rest of the garbage goes, uh, I don't know. Yeah. So anyway, uh, they, most waste management and Republic have both said that it's, uh, they're doing away with it because it's unsafe, a lot of employee injuries. And quite honestly, a lot of the cities just don't want it. Uh, one of the first things that we would have to do is to create an ordinance, uh, to, uh. Start trash pickup as a franchise with the city and then, uh. We'd have to, uh, contract with a company, so we'd have to, uh, request, uh, bids from these companies to, uh, see what they offer. All of them only offer once a week. They offer the seventy gallon trash can. Right, uh, they're, they're gonna do away with having your own trash can. You have to, you have to go with what they provide. They will provide it for you. They'll also provide a service on, um, for recycle as well, but it'll be a, a, a higher cost, a little bit more if you want. Recycle at your place. Uh, otherwise we have Redfish still going on, it's right here at the city and, uh. Uh, usually if we do start it, it's about a three to six month transition, but, um, they are, they are going away with it. And he said, uh, I talked to waste management and they mentioned that the, uh. When they get rid of the rear loading, that the prices are gonna go up with the, uh, with the one, the seventy gallon. So right now, most residents pay an average of about fifty dollars, he said, uh, probably another five to ten dollars included in that.
To do the auto?
To do the auto, yes, because we're in an open contract. So we have no contract with it, with anybody and so they can charge us. Yes, yes, so they can charge us pretty much whatever they want.
Yeah, when I, when I looked into this, not to interrupt you, but that just had, um, I had several people tell me that. Their neighbors are putting their garbage on their pile. So your next door neighbor didn't, isn't paying for, uh, waste and sneaking out and putting, uh. Uh, garbage and I also had one of the condos tell me across the street, all those houses right there dumping in, in their big bin. You know, so, and I imagine they're bringing it to work and, but, so if, if the idea is, it's gonna go on the bill. And, uh, should be a substantially lower cost.
Yes.
And, um, the city would collect that money and pay for the garbage like every other city does. There also, also could be a small franchise fee added to it. Uh, because obviously someone pays with a credit card or debit card, there's a, there's a cost to the, the city, you know, so.
Are there two companies that we, we?
There's, there's three companies out in the South Texas, yes, and, uh, I think it's Waste Solutions Republic and. And Waste Management, yeah.
Waste Solutions is a name too?
Yes.
Okay.
And, uh, and as far as recycling goes, only.
Just, um, took over primary, I think it's, is solutions or connections?
Connections, waste connections, yes.
And so. This is for discussion only, okay? Uh, all of us have emails. Then, you know, if you are in, in phone numbers, you know, I'm, I'm happy to talk to anyone about it and, um.
So you'd just be aware that, that it is going to end this year. The rear is going to end. They're gonna go to the mechanical where they pick up your, with a, a truck, uh, and, uh. Since we're in an open contract, the price is gonna go up.
And then instead of two hundred and thirty-six, uh.
It'd be.
It'll be the, the entire town.
It'd be the entire town.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be the entire town. It wouldn't be just, uh, just the two hundred and thirty-six.
Okay, there's no choice in this, so, uh, it's just choosing the company. And, uh, per Jason, it does not have to go out to bid. I think I, I would like to, uh, out of transparency, have it go out to bid. Um, and I know when I spoke to him last year, they had sample RFPs. That they would offer us.
Yes.
They had all three companies so that we.
Sample what, RFPs?
Request for, quote, request for proposal.
Okay.
I mean, because our bills are trash now.
Yes.
Two hundred, I mean, it's my quarter, but it's.
So I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but the guys that we all like are gonna be gone.
I know, and I love those guys.
And the idea is once a week pickup and then possibly brush.
Possibly brush, but that, uh, it's still, uh, it's still up for discussion.
You know, I, I walk my dog and there's a couple of, of, color sacks where on a real regular basis. Individual houses always have their, their palm cuttings and the tree trimmings and everything in the street. Right, uh, right on the street and stuff and what?
We, you know why they do that is because our staff picks it up. They, you know, our, our staff goes around and obviously if the frum falls down, they pick it up.
And I can understand that.
I've watched people come from their backyard and then throw it in the street.
Throw it in the street, I'm just saying.
Because we don't have brush pickup, I mean, um, anyhow.
Well, maybe that's something that, that would be negotiable when we try to hire.
Yeah, they'll, they'll negotiate anything that you want to include on there. Um, the brush pickup, we didn't discuss because that's an issue of, uh, how is, how is it gonna make Palm Valley look? We have corners with a bunch of brushes that can sit there for a month and it's, it's just not gonna look, uh. It's gonna look unsightly, I guess.
And I've seen it.
Yeah. So.
Anyhow, that's for discussion. It's not an open meeting, so we can't take questions, but I'll be happy to, I'm sure, go to talk to anyone afterwards. Moving on. Agenda item fourteen, discussion only on final mitigation costs associated with Lake Number Three Drainage Project.
Again, talking about. The closing out of this project, there's, um. Couple of things left, uh. Be done that's outside of the contractor's scope. Uh, it's, uh, repairing some sprinkler heads and some lines on the south and north side of Lake Number Three. The country club got a, a bid, uh, I believe it's twelve grand at the moment, right here.
Twelve thousand.
And, uh.
Is that for the heads and the?
And the line, all completely, uh, putting it all new. That, that needs to be replaced. It was damaged and or removed.
Right.
During construction.
That really should have been included with the original bid, but.
Well, just, it, it, you know, at the end of the day, from the original, original bid, right now, we've got a credit of. Twenty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars in the original of it. So, you know, it's, it's, it is what it is. It happened. Um, the way running equipment over there, it got damaged. So, uh, in, in fact, some of the, the irrigation lines were in the water.
Okay.
They were underwater, couldn't see them, but they were there. So. The, another contractor came out, another sprinkler contractor came out and has not, uh, provided a, a quote yet. I, I know Jerry told me about him, so I called the guy and he, he hadn't had a chance to put a pencil to it, but he said it was twenty grand. It was his guess, so, um. That's one mitigation item that I'll be presenting at the next council meeting to be paid. Uh, and then the second one is the hydro mulching of the dirt after the sprinklers in. Uh, and then the second one is the hydro mulching of the dirt after the sprinklers in, that's grassing, that's putting grass down. And that's $4,500. So, uh, the total there is 16.5, which based on the 24.5 that's left, there's still eight, that's 8,000 below the original there. So that's why I'm gonna recommend that payment once we get the quote on the hydro mulch, but that, that's been the verbal quote. Okay. Any questions about it?
No, you answered when we went out there that day. So.
And so the, the silt fence that's still up there, that's required to stay there till you have grass.
Oh, is that right?
Yes, sir. So that's why we haven't, I haven't gotten the contractor to pull it out yet. An, another quick subject, he was talking about the art money, ARPA money. Uh, the county still has a bunch of ARPA money and they're accepting, um, applications for it. So we turned in yesterday, one for that bypass line from Lake, uh, seven to, to, uh, four. So hopefully that's grant money.
Yeah.
We'll see what happens. So.
And that's that project all along the east side.
The first project we looked at the other Monday week ago.
I don't think we have much choice in this matter, do we? With the sprinklers.
No, sir.
The mulch.
It's gotta be done.
We gotta put it back to the way it was, uh, too bad, the one included, but. All right. I appreciate you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Consent agenda, uh, agenda item 15. Any comments, questions?
Item number E, which is the ordinance for budget adjustments. This is what is being adjusted at this time on budget, which is, uh, the adjustment on salaries under the administration. For that increase that was approved on, uh, May 17th. And the other adjustment is to carry the computer programming contract for the rest of the fiscal year in the amount of 1,340 times four months, which is 5,260. So that line item in the budget needs to be adjusted by that amount. Now we cover item E under the consent agenda.
Yeah, I signed it, yeah. Any other comments on the consent agenda?
No.
I'm looking for approval.
Second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passed. We don't have anything for executive, right? All right. Well, I used to always make the, um, motion to adjourn, but I can't make motions anymore. So it's.
Step up to the right there.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 713.